I want to leave them supervised by the United States of America and the Attorney General for which the state's on vacation on behalf of the Department of Justice.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heather?
Yes. Yes. And then we have School, you know, that School of Law District, whereas National District State is set for October 25th, 2025, marking the 30th campaign of the School of Law. And we're working together to involve our members and also to assist, so we can provide better committees. Whereas School of Law District includes, as we said last time, including past events, support made just today for the past 29 years has been built in a national state of mutual, on board, and special month of work. Whereas the senior law tier program of School of Law, who has not seen a service as a top rated school, entered by home town. Our maturity to sit in law tier activities that will make a positive long-term difference with School of Law, School of Law. Now therefore be resolved that we, the four county commissioners, who hereby proclaim Sunday, October 25th, 2025, make a difference in this School of Law. And we urge our fellow residents to answer the call to help prove light for everyone in our neighborhood or their body. We affirm that you did what you make this person. So I want to just congratulate, um, from the college for doing this program and making calls for a thoughtful program. Because, well, it's very important to, you know, give out your feelings and anything you can do to help contain the burden. And we're glad that those were wanting to be, you know, to be greatly open to being like old school, long down, if we're funded. So thank you for everything, and for all, thank you for what you've been doing.
Yeah, I just want to, I think we can talk about this, right, I mean, outside, they just dedicate, you know, real state agency, you know, good to ride in the, uh, best, uh, best one. And my part, uh, pretty, uh, pretty, uh, pretty, uh, check this the next time, so. And it's so foolish to see young people, a lot of things, or to make a involvement, where people on their bodies are over with the scenes, I mean, on a basis, some young people don't want to make a difference. And, uh, that's very reassuring to me, as a, as a father and grandfather, so, rightly.
Definitely, as far as, uh, our young people, it's nice to see that they're looking to give back to the people who need other people in need. Also, from all ages, and make a difference on our R and B program. Service, or even just individuals helping each other, helping each other, helping neighbors. So again, here show the life of the new generation moving forward, and hopefully that your peers will take control of this same thing, to help them, help others, and make a better School of Law. Thank you very much for your work.
The office has seen its first, the right place, they have, the 27 years I've been at the agency, they have done this twice a year. And it's helped our seniors all through the process.
Right, please, please clap to help each other. What? Right here? A lot of your house, so I have quite a control, I love this, ready? Somebody else, oh, my, or be back. My Murphy is mine. Oh, my God. It's lovely, I'm definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
How common? I'm scared, we're gonna get a backlash, right? Yeah.
Very important, this way, it's one side of these important hours, and also, also, we call to the same, you know, in the time, this before. Represented as well, and this is also what I call, but at one point, this was not accepted, but under the state, they were called by statewide, local courts and courts. Therefore, any subject of the case, is really hard life since the time, really minutes in court, but resulted in on the 4,000 rules of court procedure, and matching local rules, how they work. The rules of court are 4,000 keys, and they to unlock the first holes of justice. Generally, it's been brought to the Supreme bench, which is the, uh, lawyers, black votes, and bond, that most persons, not representing themselves, but allegedly are incented to lie or go, or likewise able to ignore the order. So now we're going to be ignorant of the standards of the license to tell me, likely unable to write through the lack of terms of the uncommon use of words, and the process of procedure that operates on a general sense of testing. That's why I have simple, on the one line, preserve presumption of as apparently intent of Supreme Court states in public courts. The Supremes do not intend to resolve as absurd or impossible execution, intending just to be expected in litigation in all cases. And you conclude with disclaimer, the Supremes do not intend to violate constitutions. How is it possible for John Henry to get justice? As when the Constitution article 11 reads, "All courts shall be open, and every man for his redemption, and his land, his goods, and persons of reputation, shall have remedy by due course of law, and right of justice administered, without denial of its worth." Soon it may be void against the common law, in such manner, in such case, in such courts, in such case, as the law presumably think of that. By surrendering John Henry's oath, held to the same standard as vice as it turns, this Supreme Court reformed Constitution, Constitution article, Constitution article 11, section 11, by causing denial of open courts due on reasonable practice, with the volumes of the right, with blocking right of justice to be administered, without sale, denial, or delay. Is this reason why the court has put in the disclaimer? On December 1 of 25, attending that number, and court number 7, I'm with the four judge Goodman, and I will certainly let him bind anybody who wants to come to my taxes, that's going to appeal to attend on the court.
There's Paul Comer. Good morning, George. Good morning. I already have a remedy this year, so yes, to retain the Supreme Court justice, or enough to, to protect those Supreme Court justices.
I forgot a sentence, please check, please check that, and there are conditions, although we're accomplished, in compliance, thank you.
Good morning, everyone, my name is George, I'm calling from Cali, and yes, I missed a couple of weeks, sorry about that. And this, that's for seniors, many, many people out there. I didn't get a chance to talk with one of my friends, Mr. George, I'm sure he's glad not to talk to me, but, um, I was gonna ask him one question. It's right for people to get paid, and don't do a job. It's, uh, what is it, 100 and some days, 114 days, the state has not, 114 days. If I had a job, and I can do my job for 114 days, you know how many days I would have? No. No. And I, my benefits were being cut off and everything. And this is what people have to realize, that these generations made the law, and they suit themselves first. And that's a problem. They just form that they're gonna represent people, and take care of the people. If they don't do that, then they're not doing their job. And plainness, and $230 million, at a hall, event called White House, I know, even though donated, perfectly, I, I, this, this, this information.
Okay.
They order a hall of White House, just built, you know, plan, at, at all. When they have an event, they put up tents.
What's it gonna be called?
What?
What's the office going to be called?
Exactly, it'll be called Talk, it's gonna be hall, because the White House, it's the people's house. And there's private donations paid for, not for tax purposes. So that's just the CNN problem.
Okay, okay. I'm just saying this, like, assuming that it's about 240, uh, hundred, they kind of, yeah. But isn't it funny, he screwed for 237, and who's he screwing? He's not screwing, then, screwing the majority, we're sure it's gonna be paid out of the cap. Now, I'm saying he's gonna do it for charity.
I think.
With, with, that's fair, and that's true, we know about it, you know all that Irish, and I'm just telling you, it is funny that, sir, they have, I have more worry about people having, rule their names, and losing their stuffs. And building a hall of White House. I understand what you're saying, if that's how, uh, very people put that away, other than donations, that's the reason why it's going, I, I don't, over this, or? I don't understand, and we're not in Congress right now, nobody's in Congress, nobody wants to do a job. So how the heck did he, I mean, how is it going on right now? I don't understand that. It can't go on now, you have more worry about people losing their homes, and not eating. That, and medic, or your medical bill, look at the word that, okay? And their party, who tried, who drove. And this is ridiculous, and I'm tired, I'm just tired of that. I don't know where they're getting their, their information from, but it is from different people, because they want help, and they're not getting ears, and debt, that's who she got that, that. There's a problem. Okay, we have more questions.
I'm just going to three one, that 2019, I came, for the folks, that is, he's going to happen, and I guess, you have to do it.
Thank you. Okay, and I want for appropriate minutes, for next over eighteen, so, um, questions? Yes.
Yes.
And I'm looking through the work section, let me, um, second? One question? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So also, the rules presented by grant writers, and, oh, sorry, second, another question? Yes. 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 Uh, there's nothing on the law library, asking to see if we can get a rate, we came down to 4%, so, and most of the group, what do I, law library requested, send a 5% works. So, second, one question? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And also, approval, which was that by Chula, this, our session. So, one question? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And also, approval, is presented by, obviously, the practice, and one second. One question?
Commissioner?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, we have a call for confirmation, next question. And the motion to approve what was presented, okay, so, second? Yes. Okay. One question? Yes. 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 Uh, can I ask for approval, is that by that, for these cases? So, sir, second, one question?
Commissioner?
Yes. 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 Uh, can I ask for approval, is that by this state, very kind of, uh, so, sir, second? Question? Yes. 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 And for you, uh, we pointed from our camera, you want to add, yes, Minister? Who's, right, one question? Yes. Yes. Can I ask for approval, for this report? I, I might watch that, and I'd have the, uh, the, uh, question to make. One question?
Yes. 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 My name's Al.
Good morning, Commissioners, we have a request, uh, for informational purposes, a budget adjustment of $3179 to the purpose of court services for office material, and, but, we have $5,275 adjustments for probably management, for professional services. Many percent of which is covered by, by funds. We have $23,000 adjustments to the courts, this is to cover the, like, increasing postage expenses, uh, and then finally, offices of senior services, we have a $9,008,000, this is an annual realignment, uh, that they make to ensure that the budgets are in line with their grants.
Thank you, bro. Office's office. Let me, you guys want to, right? Yeah, and the motion for, no, I'm sorry, their, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah, we also, so, sir. One question? Yes. 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 You want to respond on this one?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Uh, in Chillicothe, you have corruption of Chief Moyer, Vince, that's in Kingsborough, 2 rated 23.0551, effective 11/3/25, coming from Kingsborough, room 1. In the prison, we rescind the appointment of Jennifer Luna, Correction Officer Bart Time. In the Commissioner's office, transfer Kim Bayshak to Chief Clerk at the rate of $18 an hour, 11/3/25, is the effective date, coming from Interim Chief Clerk. And also, the Commissioner's office, the appointment of Lydian Dietrich as Chief Clerk per DM, at the rate of $35 an hour, effective 11/3/25. Uh, in addition, we have some informational items, in court administration, the appointment of Cheryl Bender as a Secretary Two per DM, rate is 15.0924, effective 10/27/25. Uh, in addition, we have some informational items, in court administration, the appointment of Cheryl Bender as a secretary two per DM, rate is fifteen point zero nine two four, effective ten twenty seven twenty five. And in the controller's office, the appointment of James Manzik, uh, the accountant, partner, associate, the rate forty three thousand four hundred eleven, effective eleven three twenty five. All appointments pending drug, test, and physical, where appropriate, and all actions involving salary, or for physicians being graded or pending salary or approval, that's all.
Welcome, we're in two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So, most, sir, second, no question? Yes. Yes. This is, uh, before we, uh, put the new business, uh, it's like, uh, we have an act of conservation, a next statement, uh, I am receiving from Janet number seventeen on the new business. Please, I have cultural conservation agent for Richard LaBorey, Heather, I hear that they found it of interest to me, because the wolf, because I have a family, thanks, with, uh, with the visitors. Thank you, sir. And, yeah.
Uh, I'm glad, first part, because you have to have the county prison, or both the concub, and monitor county, to have school county, ten days, and the monitor county prison. Uh, the annual contract, the virtual, uh, renewal, by a term, by sixty days, by either far, the pay rate will be seventy five dollars.
So, which is watching, sir, second, no question?
Commissioner Adler?
Yes. 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 On second, then, I have the, the, uh, competition, so, as my understanding, the county fund, during, when it is, that it's all seen, uh, like, was correct, and farm is randomly frozen, and creates a cluster of farms, within that area, can preserve, uh, like, the five farms, was correct, that are preserved, so, there will be all four areas, or warehouse, or. I am, uh, any motion? All seconded. One more question? Yes. I stand it. Yes. Yes. Uh, I'll be happy, do my resources.
Yes, yes, commissioners, I'm seeking, uh, who will the rate increase for the Benestar Retire Prescription Drug Plan, number twenty one ninety seven, monthly premium, will increase from ten to three twenty ten, per person, for the period January one twenty six to December thirty one twenty six, this is a five point six one percent increase for the plan year. And also approval, uh, for the Benestar Retire Prescription Drug Plan, number six five nine one, uh, the monthly premium will increase from two oh six eighty to two eighteen forty, uh, per person, uh, for the period January one twenty six to December thirty one twenty six, this is also a five point six one percent increase.
So, sir, second, no question?
Commissioner Adler?
Yes. Yes. Uh, welcome, sir.